We're going to call it the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We need a roll call.
Number Steel?
Here.
Number Lion Welch?
Here.
Number Frederick?
Here.
Number Bill Spurrow?
Here.
Number Holbrook?
Here.
Number Dean?
Here.
Number Lake?
Here.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a round. A building program highlights Lakeland Elementary. Where did she go?
She's probably heading up to the gym.
She snuck out.
Oh, there she is. She's coming back.
Oh.
We're in the gym for the next one.
Okay.
Oh, we have to go over to this.
Yes. Yeah, that's why I was running in to log into my computer.
All right, well, as well, I am Sarah Guy with a proud principal of these wonderful students, and we have three pieces to share. The first is the most important piece because our students are going to tell you all about what they're learning and how to be leaders, and I'm super, super proud of them. All right, here we go. Mr. Bassler, take it away.
Good evening. I am the basketball Duma, the K-Kids Club president. I am in Mrs. Murphy's fifth grade class. K-Kids is a student leadership club that focuses on service leadership. This club is the first of its kind at Lakeland Elementary. We started it January of this year. So far, we have been able to raise money for our school's positive behavior reward store through the sales of friendship cards. We also have started a recycling program in our school to recycle the paper from our classroom every Friday morning. Our latest project is a K-Kids store where we sell school supplies every Thursday. We eat the funds raised from the sales of these school supplies to help fund our club and to purchase more items for our positive behavior store. We are currently in the middle of making a flower basket fundraiser to support the school activity fund for filters and school-wide rewards. If you would like more information about how you can get any hanging baskets, please see Mrs. Ned. I would like to introduce the K-Kids Club officers. Vice President Adam Hadjati, Secretary Bethany Nett, Wiki, Treasurer Charlotte Simmons. Now you will hear from some of the other club members as to why they love being a K-Kids club member.
My name is Adam Hadjati. My experience in K-Kids this year has been really good because we are all working as a team and coming up with great ideas. K-Kids make me a better and happier kid. I think that K-Kids Club was a great choice for me, too, because I worked on my, worked my way up to be the vice president, which made me proud to be the leader of K-Kids Club.
My name is Zachariah, and this is what I think about K-Kids Club. It is a pretty brilliant, awesome, and interesting club. It has taught me about the five keys, which are prior planning, prevent, score, performance, and stuff about recycling. It also taught me leadership skills, kindness, and respect to other people. It was a great idea to pick this club.
Hello, my name is Aubrey Paulson. I live down here recycling because it is really good for the environment. I would be most excited to.
Hello, I am Nora T.. I like how we are helping schools by raising money for rewards and leadership. I have learned to be confident and play this game.
I'm really with you, Hall. Through my involvement with K-Kids Club, I am learning how to demonstrate leadership by assuming my community and working as a part of the team. K-Kids provides opportunities for me to organize events, make up for our decisions, and guide others with kindness and responsibility. Being a leader means taking action to improve the world around me, and K-Kids Club is helping me develop the skills and confidence to do that. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, this is Emily Simmons. I live at K-Kids Club because everyone gets to do something fun. I love being a teacher in this club. I am so happy to be, I can be a part of this. As a teacher, I have learned how to carefully count money in comparison to double-checking money. I've also learned I should never count money alone and to keep the bills facing the same direction. I have learned how to use the bull sheets to keep track of my funds. I am a math student, this job is technically.
I'm Amber Stewart. What I like about this club is the fact that I get to help my school and my community become a better place. I also like that we get to help our peers learn more about the club and how to help and learn about the community.
I am Bethany Nett. In K-Kids, we have learned the importance of a birth handshake and how to do it correctly. We also do things like serving cake at the K-Kids one is ninety years of riching, as Zachariah has shared about, we know. We have also learned about the five keys. The five keys are important to our club to be successful. Our advice during teaching of so much more than just the importance of being a helpful student, but how to be a true leader. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the K-Kids Club for sponsoring this club and leading us. Kids can make a difference just watching us. Thank you.
All right, I just want to thank Mrs. Henry and Mrs. Mettwine. They are leading this wonderful group and help them prepare for today, and so I'd like to give them both a big thank you. Okay, I think this group is done. Thank you. You did a great job, a wonderful job, K-Kids. And please thank you for bringing them. This is great experience. And most of them wrote what they said themselves, so that's great, too. Writing a little speech is another great experience. Next up, we have our STEM presentation. Rachel Ward is going to guide you into a little snapshot of what we do every day in this. Thank you.
So I'm Rachel Ward. I changed STEM to second and fifth grade, but this is just a quick overview of what we're doing here at Lakeland. You can go ahead and get us started. So those of you that are not sure what STEM is, STEM is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. In STEM, we focus on expanding our creative problem solving skills by fostering grit and cultivating a global mindset. We said people will hold and normalize setbacks and discomfort as part of the learning process. It's essential for students to experience challenges and failed attempts, working through them to build true confidence and resilience. So part of our STEM process is that frustration, frustration happens, but STEM is a safe place to fail. So when students fail, it actually builds character and helps them build a bridge, which is a mental toughness and courage relates perseverance. This is our engineering design process, and we use this every day, no matter what we're doing. So we are setting an album, we divide it, ask questions, and then we start generating our ideas, how we solve the problem, making a plan to solve the problem, and then we create. It might be code, it might be building something, and then we go on to testing our bill. This is where the failure happens, and it's just a natural part of STEM. So we make improvements and changes when things don't work, and then we go back and test again. So the test and improve is also what we can get something. When we are complete, then we share our results, which today we did dash robots. That was a lot of success and a lot of sharing from that. This is one of our coding robots. There's several indie robots, and this was purchased through a grant through our community foundation. So we are very thankful for that. But I give them a challenge, and then they have to use these coding squares. Each color is coded to do a specific thing. So the indie robot, which is right up here, as soon as he hits a color, he will react based on the color that he gets on. These are our dash robots, and we do have one that we can demonstrate today. If you want to come up and demonstrate that for us. So the dash robot has, I'll let you put that on the board. You can show that or you can just run the code. While she's getting that right, the dash robots have a gripper. They have actually markers, so they can draw. It has sketchpad for them. And then we also have robots. If you want to get yours ready, too. We have our micro robotics kits also that are good for us this year. In thirty minutes, they have to be able to solve the problem, complete the bill, and in all of the coding within thirty minutes. So all of these are projects that students have completed. I've asked them to do a little coding on a couple of them, so you can see how the robotics works. To get anything done in ten minutes is almost a miracle, so. Do you have any of your writing? If you want to press play on your code, or is it? Yeah, you got to make sure. So our dash robots have the capability to do all kinds of movement. They also have the engines built in, so you can hold them to do their dances, event dance parties. Like I said, today we have a basketball tournament with them, with our launchers. Hopefully this will work. His fly, where are they? I don't think it's on the right. Bethany, you hold this. Sure, add something really quick. This. I always have to remember which way it goes. Okay, you're not supposed to do it. Play it, and we'll just, because I don't think the launcher is set up right. Go ahead and click play. You don't have to. Yeah, just click play. She's making a sound. She wants a happy robot. I don't know if you feel one. Oh, okay. Thank you. So that's our dash robot. It does much, much more than that. And now we have this couple of, you guys just want to show, you know which one is this? What's the name of your bill? So we have the pinball machine. It's a working pinball machine. So you can play the pinball machine.
This one's like a motor car. So it goes back and forth.
And it's part of our happy trial regimen. So this one goes back and forth. The pinball machine works, and what's your favorite here? The swing, so our swing. You want to push play? Oh. And they all, we have like a tilt swirl that's fun to see. All of them are, have working parts. I may look at some of this very quickly, so I know I don't have much time. We have microbits. Our microbits can be programmed. The LED lights, they have light sound, and they also go into these robots, so we can program them for movement. We have these, our baby baity kits to create game controllers, so they can play Tetris or play Super Mario Brothers. They use the playbill to create their own buttons, and then they have to actually create the game board. We have our doodler cameras, which we've used for 3D challenges. And then our newest addition to the STEM room, which has been a huge success, we've been using TinkerCad to do 3D prints. So I give them parameters. I tell them the size of the objects they can make, the thickness, and they have to stay within that. And I give them the fractions, the size of fractions. They have to convert it to decimals, and then build a TinkerCad. All of these designs that they have created, and they're within the parameters of the bill. So our 3D printer was purchased from Good On Us, so we're very thankful for all of our generous donors. A lot of our fulfillment was purchased with booster money, so we are very thankful. You can go through all of them. I kind of went through a little fast, but I know we're for on time. Oh, and those are our tulips. Tulip is kind of happening, but we checked them out for privacy, and they have sensors that can act blocks, so once you connect them all together, like you can see in the card picture, if you put your hand over the sensor, it'll surround the light, they all communicate with each other. So just lots of coding opportunities. Basically, go through the, there's our 3D printing examples. We have some out, if anyone wanted to take a look at them. These are all the different, and I may have missed some, but these are different coding opportunities that kids have while they're in STEM. So lots of different, a variety of different ways to practice your coding skills. They can choose those that have donated resources or funds to purchase resources. And thank you for coming to code. They had to do, they had to refresh their codes. Yes, so that they get that, too. So thank you, ladies, so much for coming, and especially thank you, Rachel, for your presentations. Okay, that's it.
All right, now we're going to jump a little bit into more formal academics, just to do a really brief presentation. Actually, Bryn and Amber are going to do a brief presentation about what intervention is starting to look like at Lakeland and why.
Hi, I'm Amber Coleman. I am the reading and originist at Lakeland. I have been in this position for fourteen years, and this year I had the opportunity to take a week-long training addressing funds. So with our incredible fourth grade staff, they agreed to give an assessment, a screener to all of our fourth graders. We gave you a screener, and we found some interesting information from that, and that led us to some new findings this year that we are excited about, and we recognize we have a lot of room to grow, but we're excited with the future holds. So when you see a tier of the triangle, this triangle shows a mark of the MTSS or RTI, where most of our students should be in the green, that eighty percent. That's like a grade level expectation. Your students are maybe eighty percent. The fifteen percent is the tier two, which is your intervention, where they might come to Mr. Holtz or myself and receive some intervention. And the hope is that intervention provides them with what they need to fill those gaps to then, you know, meet them, to push them back into the classroom, to make them break off those students. And our tier three is our five percent, which is involved in our special ed qualification students. So this is what the MTSS model should look like, and we kind of found this year this isn't what our reading looked like. So we are trying to flip that triangle because it was kind of upside down for us. So Mr. Holtz is going to speak to this here.
So what we did with our letter screener was we gave them, our fourth grade students, all of our fourth grade students, and all in both pods, which is seven fourth grade classrooms, we gave them an advanced screener that tested their ability for phonics and community awareness, understanding from kindergarten, first, second, and into third grade skills. And what we saw from that is that only twenty-nine percent of our fourth grade students were proficient in phonics skills in the winter. Twenty-three percent were partially proficient, and forty-eight percent were not proficient in phonics-based skills. We spent, and I commend our fourth grade teachers because they spent a lot of time during our focus time, basically being extra interventionists and working on these phonics skills based on their output that you'll see in just a minute when we break it down by skill, where you'll see an example of the word, the skill itself, and the percentage of proficiency at each skill. We took eight weeks, eight weeks, half an hour a day, seven fourth grade teachers, two interventionists, and our S E L teacher as well was doing it during that time. And in eight weeks, we went from twenty-nine percent proficiency to thirty-seven percent proficiency, which may say that's only an eight percent increase, but that's one percent every week, and that's not a lot of time to get that much output. And so as you can see, our not proficient students, when we went down ninety percent, which in eight weeks is a giant amount of growth. So I'm very excited about this. I know Mr. Davis has said this a lot of times, that it's okay to be worried about South King Stadium. We recognize that we have a gap in our, in our students. We're trying to find a way to fill that gap. And through our phonics, community awareness, and through our letter screener, we found a giant gap, and we are now trying to fill those gaps with the Haggerty, with Ufly, with the new resources that have been purchased for us, that you guys purchased for us, for our teachers to use, and it's showing a massive mind growth already.
All right, so what we have next is what the letter screener looks like. So you're going to see how it breaks down in the different areas. So we accumulated a lot of gaps. Okay, so this is what we want you to see. The toxic graph is our winter data. This assessment was given in January, and it starts at the kindergartens. Look all the way to the left, the short vowel, an example was the word cap, and what we are looking for was the correct A sound. We see that most of our students were proficient in that, right, eighty-four percent. And then the next one is a K-one level blend, where that N T is the focus area of medicine meaningful of the words used on the assessment. Sixty-eight percent of students were proficient in that blends. And then you see digraphs and trigraphs, words like chip, right, that chuck sound. We are much less proficient in that, thirteen percent. Whereas fifty-nine percent of our students were absolutely not proficient, and some are close, right, twenty-eight percent. Long vowels, like the magic E, broke with the sign of the N, only thirty-four percent. And other vowels, like curved, the U R sound, complex consonants, inflexual endings, which would be E or I N G endings. So you can kind of see how that goes. And that's cap, you see the grade level equivalent. So it begins a kindergarten, derivational suffixes, and root or big words would be a third, fourth, or fifth grade skill. So we can kind of see where we started. That was our, like I said, mid-January assessment. We gave the assessment again approximately two weeks ago to all fourth graders, and you can see our improvement. Just not great to look at with this, so. Yeah, it's like, hard to see. Well, yeah, you can just look at the red portion, which would be the not proficient portion. So we have five percent not proficient opposed to, you know, four percent, so that one didn't change much at all. We went from fifteen to sixteen percent, and then this is where the improvement showed, which very early we did it, too, right? Fifty-nine percent in the winter, forty-five percent, now we've made up eleven percent of those students, or more than eleven percent, fourteen percent, I'm sorry. Thirty-one percent, now to twenty-one percent, fifty-seven to forty-nine. And as we vary in those areas, you're going to notice it does kind of stop. Like, the third grade skills, we didn't make much change, but we didn't get to the point that we could work on those skills with our students in that two-month time period. So our goal for next year is to start off as a leader with this and to, you know, meet the kids where they are, try and fill those gaps in the phonics areas that they need, and continue to work forward, trying to improve our reading. Any questions? Any questions? Right, that's a lot of information.
All right, thank you. I want to thank my team for helping me put this together and showcasing our students are shining, and so is our staff. It is where the sun shines bright, Mr. Davis. Thank you.
Is there anybody who wishes to address the school board? I don't have any slips here. So next, we have the approval of the minutes from March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Did we get our minutes from the closed session?
Oh, shoot, they're in my folder.
That's all right.
Okay, I can give them to you real quick.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, guys.
Agenda additions and deletions, there are several.
There are several. So you received a packet earlier today, and you should have a printed packet in front of you of the amendments for tonight's agenda. Number one, on the consent agenda under personnel recommendations, we look to add the administrative recommendation to employ Mirca Nieves Solis for the high school math teacher position effective the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, pending teacher certification and background check. Action item two amended, recommendation to extend administrator contracts should read amended to reflect a one-year extension of the current two-year contract. Action item sixteen amended, first reading of revised and new policies amended to include the recommendation to rescind policy twenty-two sixty-four, non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. Additional action item seventeen, request to adopt the twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar. And number five, additional action item number eighteen, request to consider recommendation to renew the food service management company contract with Charcoles.
Very much. Any communications?
None.
Personnel recommendations.
There are quite a few of those as well. Personnel recommendations relative to certified staff, requesting that the Board of Education accept with regret after serving Coldwater Community Schools for three years, the retirement resignation of Denise Parcell effective June one. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ the following individuals for Max Larson Elementary Summer School Program. A K-Role lead teacher Denise Sawyer, Alex Alexis Delisandro, Katie Freehouse, Hannah Haberl, Suzanne Gonzalez, Andrew Estreline as teachers, Lyle Armstrong, Renee Lowkey, Carrie Friend, Aisha Abdullah, Sana Alaside, and Joan French as paraprofessionals. And the Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ the following individuals for Jefferson Elementary Summer School Program. Lindsay Dixon lead teacher, Lori Stout, Sandy Reichardt, Karen Byes, John Haupt, Jill Avery, Pam Hamilton, Susan Mueller, Courtney Gallup as teachers, Ashlyn Schwartz, Katherine Stillson, Renee Connor, Abby Menke, Michelle Fondren, Leslie Welker, Dawn Supanowski, Kelly Redman as subteacher, Kayla Slusher, pending completion of college coursework and background check, Khadija Aljabli, Huda Mohammed, Sarah Porter, and Jenna Thomas, all as paraprofessional or secretary. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Ryan Sheets for the math teacher position for the high school summer school program. The Board of Education approved the administration, administrative recommendation to employ Kelly Butcher for the full-time English teaching position at Coldwater High School effective the twenty-five, twenty-six school year pending background check. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Mirca Nieves Solis for the math teaching position at Coldwater High School effective the twenty-five, twenty-six school year pending teacher certification and background check. Relative to support staff recommendations, the Board of Education accepts with regret the resignation of Alicia Wendor from the part-time supervisor position at Lakeland Elementary effective May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The Board of Education accepts with regret the resignation of Latifa Cartit from the part-time bus monitor position, Coldwater Community Schools effective April twenty-three, twenty twenty-five. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ James Dostal II for the bus driver position for Coldwater Community Schools effective immediately at not board approval. The Board of Education approved the administrative recommendation to employ Jason Reynolds for the part-time sub-bus driver position for Coldwater Community Schools effective immediately at not board approval. And relative to extra duty staff recommendations, Amy Poole for the position of like middle school track and field coach. school track and field coach.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the March accounts for payment and the financial statements via Member Frederick.
Be resolved that the following accounts for March be approved with payment as follows. General fund account in the amount of $2,422,388.22. Special revenue accounts in the amount of $209,805.91. And be resolved that the general fund financial statement be approved as presented.
Thank you. Next, we have the acceptance and approval of gifts presented by Member Steele.
Recently, the administration was made aware that the following individuals listed below have received monetary funds from the Good Better Best Grant through the EVC Youth and Family Center. Recognition and approval for the acceptance of the generous monetary gifts are being sought. Karen Kiss, Kohler High School for $500, Becky Simons, Kohler High School $500, Amy Billings, Max Larson Elementary for $500, and Jeanette Jones, Max Larson Elementary for $250. The gracious and continued support of the donor listed above is sincerely appreciated. We ask that the Board accept the gifts noted and acknowledge the donor's generosity. Being resolved that the Board of Education gratefully accepts the gifts as presented, and being further resolved that a letter of appreciation on behalf of the Board be sent to the donor indicated above for their worthwhile and generous gifts.
Thank you, Member Steele. That is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Support. Any discussion? What's a subteacher?
A substitute teacher?
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
In case one of these other teachers doesn't show up.
Can't make it.
Yeah. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have building reports. Is there anything the principals would like to add to their reports? Where are they? Oh, yeah, there they are. Some hiding in the back. Director of Curriculum Report, anything to add to your report?
I'd just like to congratulate Jefferson Elementary and Principal Toby Reardon. They were the first school certified in Level One with Marzano for safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, which is best practice around eight leading indicators. So congratulations to Toby and her team.
Nothing else to add to your report? No. Student reading is way up.
We're working on it. You just saw it. The presentation, we're working on it.
There's progress. It's cool.
Board Committee Reports. We had a policy committee which dealt with bylaws and policies, primarily focusing on public hearings for all of those events. The next was field and other district-sponsored trips, which encompassed field trips, co-curricular trips, overnight trips, and district-sponsored trips. Board approval was eliminated for most of those trips, except for international travel. Then there was epinephrine, making the district and the people who would be administering epinephrine immune from liability. The next was on medications, use and administration of medications within the school system. Then the next policies were student health, well-being, and suicide prevention, personal files, food services, wellness, transportation. And the last was the 2264 sexual education thing.
The title, right?
Yeah. That was for the policy committee. And then we had a finance committee that we reviewed the budget modification that will be presented earlier this evening. Rochelle Robey gave us a nice update. We went over staffing, wants and needs, the multilingual teacher, a dean of students, and a full-time multilingual director, and the future of Great Start Readiness Program, athletics, and parking lots. Anything to add to the, no, sir?
Okay. You can look over your stuff. I'll look for it. So earlier this evening, I passed out to the board my superintendent report. A lot of, a lot of things to celebrate. This month, the Parent Advisory Committee of Branch County announced the winners of the 2324 Make a Difference Awards, actually the 2425 Make a Difference Awards honoring individuals who have made significant contributions in the lives of children with disabilities in our community. And we had some staff members that we are very proud of, including Special Education Teacher of the Year Emily Pritchard at Max Larson, General Education Teacher of the Year Katie Frehhouse at Max Larson, Administrator of the Year Toby Reardon at Jefferson Elementary, and Extracurricular Inclusion Person of the Year, our basketball coach Erin Butler. Aquatic Center notes, I'll continue, I'll start, this is the first one that I'll include Aquatic Center updates in my notes. In March, we saw an increase of 720 patrons using the facility for March of 2024. In April to this date, we've seen an increase of 258 patrons in the first 20 days. We have expanded water fitness classes to offer them six days a week, and this month alone, we've increased our membership by 15 contracts. And then recognition, I'm not going to read through all of these names unless you'd like me to, but two things, special thanks to the Eviro Clean Custodian Angela Farrell for the quick response regarding the electrical panel at Jefferson Elementary. If she had not called 911, we are told bad things could have happened, and Jefferson might still not be open to this day. So we owe her a ton of things, and as much as we can provide for her. And the Branch Area Career Center welding students helped to fabricate a metal tree as a sculpture for the Four Corners Park in town, and it was installed this week, this past week, and they have a dedication ceremony this coming Wednesday. But there were many students across the county that were involved in it, but we had, I believe, 15 of our own students who were involved in this project to put that tree together and weld every leaf, branch, and trunk to have that as a permanent fixture in downtown Coldwater. So. And there's a picture on the back of it if you haven't seen it yet, on the back of my report, so. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any discussion items?
Nope.
Well, we have the recommendation to amend and approve the 2024-2025 budgets. Is there a motion?
Some move. Support.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Billsborough?
Yes.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to extend the administrators' contracts for the building administrators and the athletic director and the curriculum director. Does he have the music?
He does.
Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the two-year, one-year contract extensions as presented below with tenure in position, Ms. Jill Hardaway, Ms. Toby Reardon, Ms. Sarah Newbecker, Mr. Jacob Kumar, Mrs. Katie Fleming, Dr. Stephen Hope, Mr. Brian Schirr, Mr. Todd Farmer, and Mr. Gary Dancer. Is there a motion?
Some move. Support.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billsborough?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to extend the superintendent employment contract. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves to extend the superintendent employment contract for Paul Flynn beginning January, July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028 as presented. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billsborough?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lion Welch?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the athletic overnight state for CCS qualifying athletes to compete in the track and field state finals. Be resolved, the Board of Education approve an overnight state for all CCS qualifying athletes on May 30th, 2025 to compete in the state finals for the track and field on Saturday, March 31st, 2025 as presented. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Support. Any discussion?
Do we have any students that is, yep?
Not yet. We want to make sure that we have it in time because state finals is the final week of May this year, and it would be really crunching it if we waited until the May meeting for Board approval. But no, regionals are mid-May, couple of weeks before state finals, either the 15th or 16th, so.
And this is something that won't come to the Board again, right?
Correct.
Under the new policy.
Right. Yep.
Should it become tonight?
Yeah, because we're.
Because we'll pass the other one.
We've only gone through the first reading.
Oh. I think it's time for me to resign or retire or something.
No, you're good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the request to approve a new 2025-2026 elective course for sixth-grade students. Like middle school principal Jacob Kumar is requesting Board approval of an additional elective for sixth graders for the 2025-26. The new elective is titled STEM Foundations Building and Exploring. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the adoption of the 2025-2026 sixth-grade elective course STEM Foundations Building and Exploring as submitted. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the quote from Windscreen Factory for new backstop pads for the CCS softball complex. The current backstop pads are cracked and very worn and need to be replaced. Be resolved, the Board of Education approve the quote from Windscreen Factory in the amount of $5,390 for new backstop pads for softball complex as presented. Is there a motion?
Some move. Support.
Any discussion?
I'd like to add a little bit of information because I was confused on this. The pads will go over the, over plywood, and they'll be removed after every season and stored inside to protect them from outside. And the reason that you only got one quote for these is because it's very difficult to find companies that do this, but also our baseball coach, Spangler, has used this company for similar items for the baseball diamond and highly recommended them to athletic director.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the request to approve the invoice from Byram &amp; Fisk Communications. Administration is requesting formal Board approval of the invoice of Byram &amp; Fisk Communications in the amount of $6,250 for consulting and communication services regarding a district personnel matter. This was the...
The communication strategy.
The, yeah, but the, the hardwire from here to the...
No.
Oh, that's not this?
No. This is, this was in regard to the teacher that was...
Oh, that, oh, yeah.
Yep.
Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the invoice from Byram &amp; Fisk Communications in the amount of $6,250 for consulting and communication services regarding a district personnel matter as presented. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Support.
Any discussion?
Yes. Is this a retainer, or is this for just that incident?
It's just for that incident, services provided.
Okay. We don't have any ongoing retainer with the company.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the request, recommendation to approve the quote from City Glass for new doors at the Lincoln Building. Administration is requesting approval of the quote from City Glass in the amount of $6,800 for new aluminum doors for door AA. Where is door AA?
I was gonna add that. I think it's the front door. There's two of them.
Yeah, the doors are a lot of, for safety purposes around the building, starting, yeah, starting with A. But I, I'm not exactly sure which part of the building that is. The buzz isn't here to tell me.
It's the boiler room.
It's the boiler room.
Boiler room door.
Okay. Be resolved, the Board of Education approve the quote from City Glass in the amount of $6,800 for new aluminum doors for door AA at Lincoln Building to be paid for with funds from the district sinking fund as presented. Is there a motion?
Some move. Support.
Any discussion?
Yes. It's well needed. It's been needed in that building for a long time, so.
No. Thank you.
That door specifically.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have the recommendation to approve the quotes from Floor Care Concepts for the restoration and recoating of the gymnasium floors. They are working on the high school main gym floor, the high school main gym floor, the middle school gym floor, and the Lakeland School gym floor. Be resolved, the Board of Education approve the four quotes from Floor Care Concepts for the following amounts as presented. The high school main gym, clean floor, restore gloss using a burnishing process, $2,710.92. Prepare and apply gym finish and final floor finish, $12,408.44. The middle school gym, prepare and apply two coats of gym finish and final floor finish, $7,050. The Lakeland School gym, prepare and apply two coats of gym finish and final floor finish at $5,974.16. Is there a motion?
Some move. Support.
Any discussion?
Yes. Is the high school main gym, prepare and apply gym finish and final floor finish what we lovingly refer to as the old gym?
No.
No.
I think it's just the main gym.
Two things, then they're cleaning the floor, restore the gloss, using a burnishing process, and then prepare and apply the gym finish on the final floor.
So correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the, the burnishing is in the summer?
That'll be done at the end of May.
At the end of, so going into summer to redo, and then the, the applying the new finish, the more expensive process, is what we do each year at Christmas time.
Yes.
So you get it ready for fall sports, you know, camps and fall sports, and then you get it ready in the winter.
Because the new stuff that gets put on, it's, it helps the shoes stick a lot better when they're playing basketball. Don't necessarily want the, that to stick when they're playing volleyball, because then it scrapes them up and...
Right.
So that's why we moved it a couple of years ago to doing that later.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have a request to approve the Lakeland School Field Trip. Lakeland Elementary Principal Sarah Newbecker is requesting Board approval of the field trip to the Fort Wayne Zoo for the fifth grade students, pending the award of funding from a special zoo grant so students may attend for free. School buses will be scheduled to transport students. They were broken up into two separate dates, the May 15th and the 23rd of May. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves of the request for a field trip to Fort Wayne Zoo as presented. Is there a motion?
Some move.
Support.
Any discussion? Is this the one that has little cars that goes through the zoo and, and you can see the giraffes and all that stuff? Is this Froggy Park?
Yes.
It's probably a children's zoo.
They're all not yet.
Froggy. Froggy is a children's zoo.
I was asking the wrong people. Okay. Okay. Oh, I forgot. Did we get a motion and a, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next we have the request to approve the invoice from the Turnkey Network Solutions for engineering work for the Fiber Run project. Being resolved, the Board of Education approves the invoice for the Turnkey Network Solutions for $5,499.50 for the field and CAD engineering and permitting labor and fees for proposed build from the high school to the central office as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Can you address this a little? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, so this was going back to our conversation in the fall where we were, the, the original plan was to run new fi-, or fiber internet from the high school to Jefferson and then from Jefferson to, or the, or from the high school to central office. After the project got started, there were numerous unforeseen circumstances such as right of ways, easements, different types of permissions that we'd have to get, whether it was continuing on the telephone poles or, or the underground, which would need a special easement from the railroad just to go to the central office. The small staff at central office and, and the age of the building and the hope someday to sell that building, we decided that fiber wasn't necessary to run out there, so we canceled that part of the project, which was going to cost an additional, a minimum $15,000 to the district. After we did that, we were notified that work that had previously been done in preparation for this was still our responsibility and that is the charge here for the, the work that they had done in the planning and permitting before we canceled that part of the project.
Thank you. You're welcome. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next we have the recommendation to purchase one new school bus.
In a kind one?
Or, yeah, 12.
For the new switches?
You missed the one for computer switches from Inacom. It should be before that.
Number 12.
You wanted all the quotes.
Just go through all, yeah, go through all.
Hey, maybe next time. Next time, maybe I won't want all the quotes. Uh, we have the request to approve the bid from Inacom Technical Services for CCS network switch equipment. We have bids from Delta Network Services, $173,000, Inacom Technical, $200,000, Vector Technical Group, $248,000, Axiom, $172,000, and WZC Networking, $221,000. The Board of, being resolved, the Board of Education approves the bid from Inacom Technical Services for network switch equipment in the amount of $200,090 as presented. Is there a motion?
So.
Support. You want to explain how we have to choose this one?
Well, yeah, we went through a bid process but, and met with four different companies. We got four different bids?
Five.
Five different bids. And we worked in coordination with CISD, which we hire all of our computer technology services through. But I think it's important to note that given the E-rate funding on eligible, eligible category one items, the actual cost of this $200,000 project to Coldwater Community Schools is $30,013.50 or 15% of the total cost.
Do we pay the $200,000 upfront and we reimburse for that or?
Through the Bayre program, they will pay their portion of the.
And this was the only quote that addressed everything we needed to address? Is that right?
Correct. As I understand it, it comes, the differences comes down to the quality of the, the parts that we're getting.
Should this not be a?
We can do a roll call. We can do a roll call on anything you want.
Let's do a roll call.
Okay. Um, member Steele?
Yes.
Member Lyon Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billsboro?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes, motion passes. Next we have the recommendation to purchase one new school bus. We had three quotes or something somewhere down here. Being resolved, the Board of Education approves the purchase of a 77 passenger general education bus in the amount of $146,393 from Midwest Transit as presented. Is there a motion?
So.
So moved.
Any discussion? How do we have to pick midwest?
So we go through, we go through a bidding process and through the state. And Midwest was one of three, was one of three. And this was the, the best proposal for our needs.
Okay.
Does it come with a driver?
I wish.
Is it diesel?
This one is diesel, yes.
And it's a one in, one out kind of thing?
Yeah, this is replacing that 200, 2012.
Yeah, 200 some thousand miles. You know, if our garage is, is anxious about having some gas and some diesel and.
No, I think they're more anxious if we move to electric. So I think right now they're comfortable with either gas or diesel.
Okay. Are we comfortable with gas or diesel?
Yeah.
Roll call vote.
Member Billsboro?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lyon Welch?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes, motion passes. Next we have the recommendation to approve the quote from Rydell for our new football helmets and smart helmet technology. Athletic, athletic director Todd Farman with the support of the superintendent Flynn is requesting board approval for the quote from Rydell in the amount of $6,434.45 for six new football helmets, six Speed Flex helmets, and one subscription for Insight Analytics Smart Helmet Technology. Being resolved, the Board of Education approved the quote from Rydell in the amount of $6,434.45 with records and report impact data to be paid for from the funds in the 2025-2026 budget as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Can you explain the smart helmet technology?
I was gonna ask.
Yeah, it's, it's sensors are in the helmet, so if it takes a heftier hit or a stronger hit, that it sends a signal to a device on the sideline to give trainers and coaches an indication that they may want to pull that kid and, and look, go through concussion protocol and that type of thing.
Does it pull other data that they can use just to track just hits in general or?
That I'm not sure of. I just know that it's, it's really focused on the, the safety protocols and the concussion protocols.
Do we have policies in place, steps to take that does go off or procedures in general?
Every, every coach to coach in the state of Michigan has to go through concussion protocol training as well as first aid training, CPR, those type of things, but concussion protocol is definitely part of it. And our trainers or ambulance staff would also be, be there to do that. But yeah, now, I don't know if all schools do it, but most schools will create baseline data with kids at the beginning of the season and then have comparable data if, if necessary to check a kid.
So if a parent came up to us, you know, a day after the game or something and said, I think my kid got a concussion during his game, is there data to pull from with that?
There, there might be. This is the first time that we, we ever.
Yeah, six.
How does that work? Are we, are we, are we working to get most, is there a plan to transition to all of these helmets? How do we pick the six kids that wear the helmets?
The, what we would do for those six kids are the ones that are probably going to be impacted, running backs, quarterback, those kids. And then, yes, we would like to transition to that. I mean, with the cost of the helmets, we couldn't move all in at one time. We also have to look too is, because we get our helmets reconditioned every year. Sometimes they come back rejected, some are older. And so we just have to buy more at certain times.
Sure, cool. Does the quarterback have a earpiece in there so you can?
No. We don't have that technology.
So this would recommend, this would indicate there's a concussion before a doctor looks at it?
It would indicate, it would indicate an impact.
It could have been a concussion.
That, yeah, that could, so indicating that somebody should look at the kid because they've gotten a substantial bit.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have a request to approve the 2025-2026 Coldwater High School Program of Studies. CHS administration along with the support of the superintendent Flynn is formally requesting board approval of the final draft of the 2025-2026 Coldwater High School Program of Studies. Being resolved, the Board of Education approved the adoption of the final draft of the 2025-2026 Coldwater High School Program of Studies as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Uh, next we have the first reading of revised and new policies. Board Policy Advisory Committee along with the superintendent Paul Flynn met on April 9th, 2025 to review and rewrite some of the district's existing policies, review new policies in accordance. The policies are as previously outlined during the committee report. The board will be asked to conduct a second reading, including the final adoption of the revised and new policies. Being resolved, the Board of Education acknowledges the recommendation of the first reading of the revised and new policies as submitted. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Uh, member Dean?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Lyon Welch?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billsboro?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes. Motion passes. We have the request to adopt the 2025-2026 school year calendar. Being resolved, the Board of Education approves the adoption of the 2025-2026 school year calendar resolution as submitted and assures compliance with the Section 1284 of the Revised School Code dictating the number of pupil instruction days and clock hours. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Do we have a calendar in our package?
It's in your amended one?
Thank you.
Because it just, oh.
That's fine.
Are we just discussion yet?
Yes, we are.
So as I, as I mentioned to the board last week, I thought we were really close. The union didn't. And that was completely on me. I got my wires crossed. So I met with the union president, Jeanette Jones, a couple of times last week and we, we got down to really nitty gritty details. And basically for this year, we have, we're moving parent teacher conferences in October to evening conferences on Thursday, the 23rd, so the teachers would teach a full day, then evening conferences like they usually do, but on Wednesday. And then on Friday, we would typically have a half day with students and a half day with parent teacher conferences. But there's the request to do a full day of parent teacher conferences to help out, to help reach more of our, our parents. And we believe that we could get more, especially at the elementary levels, if we have morning opportunities. So that half day, we then switch to the day before Thanksgiving, so the 26th. Having the day before Thanksgiving is a half a day instead of a full day off. The, the negotiations went very, very well, but, and we came to a tentative agreement last Friday, but they needed time, the union needed time to reach out to its membership and get approval from the membership, and that approval came at about noon today. And so that's why it was on the amended agenda. But very, I, I think the other part that needs to be noted is we've also agreed that after this and beginning next year, we're going to look at a multi-year calendar, so we're not doing this last minute and trying to figure things out. And so everybody can plan better for the future, so we'll be doing that in the fall.
I told this is Monday through Friday, but do we have a graduation date?
Currently, we don't have a graduation for next year. Dr. Hope had asked if we could have a conversation regarding graduation. We have not yet, and I know that some board members had also expressed a question about that, but we can get that answer to you ASAP for next year, right? We don't have to do it today.
I have talked to Ms. Flynn about my preferred date and.
Okay, being a little soon, because I know people like to plan a year in advance.
I am wondering about the, because we've never put the graduation date in there.
No, we haven't.
Okay. But I'm wondering why we keep moving the school year into the summer? I mean, we're getting farther and farther. I mean.
Oh, we're getting out sooner. It's not June. Our last day of school, May 29th.
Yeah, but graduation's the 18th and May 18th, and it used to be June 6th or something.
But we, last day of school is June 1st.
Pardon?
Last day of school is June 1st.
Well, I know that this year, but like, because we moved.
And it used to be 14.
The start of school to, I don't know, the 13th of August or something.
So the start of.
Let's just say half a year, half a later day start.
So, so the start of school is one of the two things that, that the ISDs get to, get to decide. ISDs decide the beginning of the school year, the first day of school, and the breaks. Now, they don't just do it by, you know, by telling us what it is. We have a meeting in the fall to talk about it. And we've talked about, just this past year, we talked about going into June to start a little bit later in August. But there's, there's some other things that we in the union are, or I in the union are going to take to the ISD level when we meet. Talking about start dates, talking about potential end dates and that type of thing. Because when you end on a Friday in May, and if you have to make up any days, you're going one or two days into June, we really don't have a lot of guaranteed attendance on those type of days, so we want to do what's best for kids. We'll get through this one and, and we'll work out a better plan and a long, a longer term plan in the future, but graduation is part of that conversation for next year.
And there, there is a common calendar between the three LEAs. What's he called, through the ISD that at least says when we start, now when we stop, or like you said, when we have vacations.
Yep.
They're all common.
Okay, this is a roll call vote.
I didn't actually get who offered support on the motion. I don't know if I missed it or.
Just pick somebody. Mr. Holbrook, Mr. Holbrook supported it.
Okay. I'll say.
Didn't you?
Thanks there.
Yeah, okay.
All right, member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Billsboro?
Yes.
Member Lyon Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
And member Lake?
Yes, motion passes. Next we have the request to consider the recommendation to renew the food service management company contract with Charwell's. I don't know, we had about 18 people, different companies submit things and then it was pared down to about four or five. Being resolved, the Board of Education approves the contract with Charwell's Food Service for a total of five years, including four one-year extensions pending state approval. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
I just know that my kids rave about the food on a daily basis and everything that we've given, I think they do a really great job and.
Was this designed to affect our. Was this designed to affect our vote?
It worked.
It worked. I guess you just go, "Look at all..."
That always works, come here.
Did we have the moment to... Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
Uh, Member Ryan Welch?
Yes.
Member Frederick?
Yes.
Member Billsboro?
Yes.
Member Holbrook?
Yes.
Member Steele?
Yes.
Member Dean?
Yes.
Member Lake?
Yes.
Motion passes. Announcements and comments. The next weekend, our meeting of the Board of Education will be held May 19th, Monday, 2025, at 6 o'clock in the evening at the Administrative Service Center located at 401 Soft River Drive in Coldwater. We're adjourned.